Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting. Today is Monday, April 22nd. It also happens to be Mrs. Regan's birthday, so happy birthday to you. The time is 6:30 and I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Lavelle, if we could have a roll call, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Doring?
Here.
Mrs. Passeretti?
Here.
Mrs. Reyna?
Here.
Dr. Reed? Ms. Regan?
Here.
Dr. Roscoe?
Here.
Mr. Ross? Mrs. Risaci?
Here.
Mr. Vado?
Here.
Seven members present and voting.
Thank you. Before we get started with our next item, I would like to make a motion to amend our agenda for this evening. I know that our public comment comes quite early in our agenda and we have an update on the turf, which I realize many of you may or may not be here to speak about that. So I would like to make a motion to add an additional public comment session after we get that update from Mr. DePtoola. So...
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Thank you very much. We will see that second public comment there. Before we go to our presentation of awards, on the 24th of this month, it is Admin Appreciation Month or Day. And so Linda, we cannot say thank you enough for everything that you do for us, for Superintendent Belizzi, for the Board of Education. Like, thank you is too small of a word. And so, we have a little something for you. I'm just gonna bring it over to you. And you were so funny that you thought these flowers were for somebody else, but surprise, they're for you. I don't know, are there any board members that would like to say anything? Yeah, I figured, so. Go ahead, Mr. Vado. We'll start at your side.
I just wanted to echo same sentiments, Linda. You know, we've worked together for a long time, way back when, when the offices were at Sheehan, if you remember. And you're always a help and we can call you anytime and try to get in touch with Mrs. Belizzi for us. Thank you.
Hi, Linda. I just wanted to say, I really appreciate you so much. I know, I really do know how much work you do for all of us and for our district especially. And I want to thank you for everything that you do. And you do it with so much grace and so much professionalism and we're just so grateful for you.
I'd fully echo that as well. Big thank you for everything you do for our district. I've had the pleasure of working with you my two and a half years on the Board and for many years prior to that. Just a big thank you for everything you do for our district. It's very much appreciated.
As a new Board member, you are very welcoming and answer all of my questions and always giving any information you can, so I really, really appreciate that.
Thank you. Your hard work does not go unnoticed. That is, we appreciate you.
You know, isn't that a great way to start this meeting, right? Feel the love. Okay, now I would like to bring up our student representatives. So we have Haley from Lyman Hall. Welcome. Thanks so much for being here.
Hi, thank you for having me again tonight. So, the month of May is going to start off with office hours on the first, which will follow a special bell schedule. On the second, our summer reading will kick off and there's a book sale at our school. The quarter, the fourth quarter interim is on the third, as well as the book sale continues, the Thrills and Thrills Music Festival, the Hall of Fame Ceremony. And the fourth is the Project Grad Shake-A-Can at Stop &amp; Shop from 10 to 2. The sixth to the 17th, we have AP Testing. The eighth is I've Got Plans Day in the Library Media Center for the Seniors, as well as the International Celebration at SCOW. The ninth is the Post-High School Fair. The 10th, we have the Junior Prom at Fire on the Ridge. The 15th, Office Hours Again, which will follow a special bell schedule. The 16th, we have a two-hour early release, which will also follow a special bell schedule, and the PTAC. From the 21st to the 23rd, we have the Ag Fair. The 21st as well, we have a late bus. On the 22nd is the NGSS Assessment for Grade 10, as well as the Varsity Scholar Ceremony. The 24th is the Get Outside and Play Day, as well as our Senior Prom at the Aquaturf. On the 27th is Memorial Day, so we will have no school. The 29th is Scholarship Night. And the 30th is our Senior Outing and again, a late bus. Thank you.
Thank you. Leah and Emma, if you would like to come and give us a report from Sheehan, please. Thanks for being here.
Thank you guys for having us again tonight. Starting in May, on the first, we have a faculty meeting. On May 3rd, our fourth interim ends and Sheehan High School Hall of Fame induction will be held in the Elks Hall. On May 5th, we have CIAC Scholar Athlete Banquet at the Aquaturf. May 6th through the 17th, we have our Advanced Placement Testing. On May 6th and 7th, we have the CNA Testing for the Students in Sheehan's CNA Program. May 6th through the 10th is Teacher Appreciation Week. May 8th is a Cabinet Meeting, National School Nurse Day, and the 2024 International Celebration by the SCOW Club. On May 10th, we have Post-High School Fair for Seniors, that's at the Hubcap. May 13th through the 24th is Senior Graduation Survey. And May 15th is an Advisory Bell Schedule, Department Meetings, and the Spring Concert in the Auditorium at 7:00 PM.
Continuing on, May 16th will be a half-day for Early Release PD. It's also the AP Art Show, which is in the Hubcap, and PTAC Meeting. May 18th is our Junior Prom, which is at the Views of Powder Ridge. May 21st is our Music Department's Award Banquet and also System-Wide PTAC Meeting. May 22nd, we will have NGSS Testing, the Sheehan Art Show, which is held in Senior Court, and the Choral Festival. We will also have a Faculty Liaison Meeting. May 23rd will be College Signing Ceremony and a Bus Evacuation Drill. May 24th is our Get Out and Play Day at Sheehan, which is held by our Student Council and we are very excited about all the events we have planned. May 27th is Memorial Day, so school will be closed. May 29th is an Office 30 Schedule for Senior Yearbook Distribution, Senior Academic Awards and Scholarship Night, and is also our new I Got Plans Day for Seniors, which has been moved from the beginning of the month to the end. May 30th is Incoming 8th Graders Sports Info Night and it is also the Board of Education Meeting Honoring Students. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We are certainly in that busy time of year as school starts to wind down. That is evident. So thank you so much for being here. You are welcome to stay, but I understand, probably other priorities call. Superintendent Belizzi, I'm gonna pass this over to you for our presentation of awards. It seems like we have a lot to celebrate here tonight.
Okay, thank you. To get us started this evening, we're gonna start with the recognition of the Lyman Hall School Boys Indoor Track Team. And before I start and call everyone up, I just want to say a special congratulations to all of you. What an incredible accomplishment. You should all be very proud of you self, of everything you have done, and for all of the role models that you've become for all the students that will come after you. So, I know we're looking forward to honoring you tonight and I do know you have a banquet after this, but congratulations to each and every one of you. So at this time, I'd like to call up their coach, David Palmer, who is going to also acknowledge our students as well.
First of all, good evening, everyone. So our season, special season, it reads as SCC East Champs, SCC Runners Up, Class M State Champions, and State Open Runner-Up. But other things happened during the season. We were the SCC Coaches Invite Champions. We were runners-up at the Yale Cup and seven school records were broken. And our Sprint Medley Relay also held the fastest time in the country for several weeks. That is kind of a broad view of what we did. This year, we had several kids compete at the highest level. We sent nine kids to Nationals this year to compete and represent Wallingford. It was an impressive season so far. The boys that were competing at the state level and scoring points, we had Lucas DiCresenzo, Chris Drescher, Ethan and Aaron Rich, Quinn Murphy, Evan Doobie, Peter Gennars, Austin McWeeny, Tim and Tom Conklin, Owen Rich. And especially, we had four seniors represent Lyman Hall. We had Dom, Kalella, Gabe Toppin, Henry Murphy, and Mike Fisher all represent Lyman Hall at the state level. To put this in perspective, how our season kind of went, there's 15 events that are scored at a track meet. And Lyman Hall ended up scoring points at 11 of them. So that means that as a team, we were competitively scoring in almost every event. We scored 79, almost 80 points, 79.58, and the next closest team scored 52. So this is probably one of the most dominant seasons that Lyman Hall has ever experienced on the track and this is definitely the best team I've ever coached. And these guys will tell you that I compare past seasons to every season. I compare us to different years and this is the most successful season I've ever coached. Put that on note. This year, we had several athletes go to New England's. And normally, we send maybe one relay, maybe one athlete. This year, we sent several athletes. We placed in the sixth. Tom Conklin placed in the sixth, Owen Rich placed in the four-by-two, the 55-meter hurdles, the four-by-four. Aaron Rich was scoring the four-by-two, as well as Tim and Tom in the four-by-two, four-by-four. Tom Conklin also placed in the sixth, Mike Fisher placed in the four-by-two and four-by-four. The biggest performance of the day, though, was the Sprint Medley Relay ended up, oh, no, sorry, the four-by-four, ended up winning New England's that day with the school record of 322, which was an impressive performance. And as far as Nationals and everything like that, this is the first time I've taken more than one group of kids or one athlete. Just to put it out there, we had nine kids qualify. We had Lucas in the weight throw, Dom in the hurdles, Owen in the hurdles, Gabe in the shot put, Ethan in the high jump, Aaron in the four-by-two, Mike Fisher in the four-by-two, SMR four-by-four, and Tim and Tom in basically every event they ran. So these guys, they've been out there, they went competing, and it was awesome to watch them compete and awesome to watch them every single day give it their all. And this is the true definition of a team right here. I had several other parents from different programs say, "Wow, I wish my kids were on Lyman Hall" because the way they cheer for one another, from the best athlete to the worst athlete, and they all support one another. This season was special. We had a Sprint Medley Relay that ended up placing fifth in the nation and earning All-American status. Those guys really stepped up and it's one thing to be ranked top in the country, it's another thing to actually do it. I gotta thank the parents. These meets are excruciating. They're long, they're like 15 hours sometimes to watch eight seconds. So, a lot of respect to the parents that, we went all over the state, we went to New York, we went everywhere. I gotta thank the community of Wallingford. We were fundraising everywhere to help support, pay for buses and get these kids to different meets. I think Raj, you were actually at one of our fundraisers, which is great to see. And last but not least, I gotta thank the kids. You guys made this season something special. You guys really elevated not only yourselves, but each other. It was great to see and it was great to see Lyman Hall win its second state title in three years. So it's awesome. Congratulations, guys.
So I have to tell you, this is incredible. Coach, hearing words like dominance, championships, All-American, they just rolled off your tongue as if they were nothing. I'm over here like having a heart attack. I think it's amazing. Congratulations. What an accomplishment. And I hope that you just take a moment to breathe in what this feels like because it's years of hard work that have all culminated in this moment. And so I want you to live in it so that you can look back and always remember it because it is such an accomplishment and truly something special that you've all done here. Congratulations. Parents, congratulations. It's a success for you all. And I know other Board members want to be able to say something too because this is truly, truly a moment. So congratulations. Who would like, go ahead.
So it's kind of an amazing thing to see these students. I recognize a lot of these faces. I hear a lot of these names because you're the same age as my very own senior. And so when I see and I look out there and I see, you know, my son played with you growing up and I hear the Rich Boys, and it's such, not just a moment of pride for your parents, I will say for the community, though, because this is really, really special to hear that you guys have come along so well and you are no longer those little boys running around throwing dirt at each other. So, it's really an honor to see you guys grow into these fine young men, so thank you.
I know, we use this phrase a lot, but it truly is the best part of our meeting and the best part of being on the Board of Ed is watching the pride in your faces when you know that you've done well and you've succeeded. And from my point of view up here, the moment of joy that I saw when you guys got to see your banners for the first time, we were all watching your faces and it was very, very cool. So congratulations to all. Well-deserved.
And I know that you have a banquet to get to, to continue the celebration, so we don't want to hold you any longer, but thank you so, so much for coming and letting us share in this moment with you. It truly is something spectacular. Thank you. I know Superintendent Belizzi, we have another honoree and don't let the lack of audience diminish the honor. I apologize for dismissing them, but I understand. I understand time schedules and time constraints, so.
So this next award and the next person we'd like to honor and recognize is Mrs. Christy Ma-Dancy. And so on behalf of all of us, we want to first say congratulations because it is a phenomenal honor and I was so glad that I got to be there that morning when you received that award. And we are so very proud of you and all of your accomplishments. And Mrs. Latour would like to say a few words to congratulate you.
So this is as much for the people in the room as for the public as well. It's always an honor to shine a spotlight on someone from my office who is so well-deserving of the accolade that was presented to her at the Atomic Conference. Christy Ma-Dancy, our Mathematics Coordinator, has been an integral part of Wallingford Public Schools for quite some time. She's had several key positions, but most recently as K-12 Mathematics Coordinator. She has led the district in shifting the curriculum to align to current state standards and she works tirelessly to provide professional development and instructional support to our staff and best practices to meet the diverse learning needs of the students in our mathematics classroom. Passionate about mathematics is an understatement. She is a powerhouse, keeping us all on our toes. Christie strives to keep the pulse on mathematics instruction, not only in Wallingford Public Schools, but across the state of Connecticut. Her continuous work with other math leaders through her role as President of the Connecticut Council of Leaders of Mathematics provides the platform for transformative change in how educators instruct math to school-aged children. She recently co-authored the Position Statement Equity in Mathematics Instruction, which has gained a tremendous amount of traction at the state level, bringing much-needed conversation to the ideas of creating student agency within the classroom, developing capable math learners, diversifying mathematical offerings, and reviewing systems that limit math opportunities and lower expectations for students to create much-needed change. While the Wallingford Public Schools has always been proud of Christie for her hard work, her forward thinking and dedication to mathematics, this year, her counterparts across the state of Connecticut recognized her talent as well. At this year's Atomic Conference, Christie was presented with the Robert A. Rosenbaum Award. This award is given to the member of Atomic that demonstrates outstanding commitment and successful service to the entire mathematics community in the state of Connecticut. I for one cannot think of a more deserving person to receive it. Congratulations, Christie.
Congratulations, Christie. It's so awesome to see that the rest of the state acknowledges the gem that we have here in Wallingford and I hope they don't think we're going to share you too much. But thank you so much for all the hard work that you do. It's amazing that it was recognized and I hope that you feel really accomplished for the day-in and day-out effort. So thank you. Of course, go ahead.
I would just like to say something real quick. Congratulations, Christie. I've known you since you were a little kid and you make us proud. Thank you so much.
That concludes our presentation and awards. Item number six on our agenda is Public Comment and I'm just going to read this public comment. For those of you who may have not been here at the start of our meeting, we are having an additional public comment segment after the update on the turf. The Board of Education welcomes you to our meeting as we always look forward to public input. Before we begin, we want to review the process of comments and questions for this meeting. The terms are for the Policies 9323 and 1120. Public comment is intended for the Board of Education as an entity as individual Board members do not have decision-making authority. Public comment is intended to allow citizens to comment and ask questions. These will either be answered during this meeting or at a later date by the Superintendent if additional research or materials are required. We ask everyone behaves in a respectful way that sets an excellent example for the students that we all wish to serve. And with that, if there's anyone here for public comment, I would like to welcome you up. If you don't mind just stating your name and address for the record, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Good evening. Steven Risaci, Nine Platt Drive. I'm also the head lacrosse coach at Sheehan High School. So I'm here tonight, I corresponded with Dr. Roscoe about me speaking tonight. I want to start off by saying, I'm very appreciative of the new turf. It's a great asset to the town, it's great for our kids, it's great for athletics. I'm not here to point fingers, I'm not here to place blame, but I am here tonight to tell you there's something wrong with the turf. I've been on numerous fields, I've coached a lot of athletics throughout my life, my career. I've been on a lot of different surfaces throughout the state. In our surface, which is brand-new, it's just not right. During the rainstorms, I understand there's a problem with the drainage and things like that. I'm not an engineer, by no means, and I'm not here to ask questions about engineering, but I am here to say that it's not normal when we're on the field after a rainstorm for our feet to be squishing in the turf. It's not normal for the pellets to rise, all the rubber all over the turf where our athletes are slipping all over the place. Again, I'm not here to place blame. I'm here for a solution. I'm not a person who comes to these type of meetings without a solution, but I don't have a solution. But I hope that we can, as a group and as the Board and as Mr. DePtoola, we can come up with some type of solution because right now, there's something wrong with that turf. I don't know what's wrong. I hope Mr. DePtoola can offer what is wrong and we can go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. And as you know, there'll be the update later, so I think some of your questions will be answered. Sure. Do we have anything else for public comment? Okay, not seeing any. I guess we can move on. Okay. I would like to entertain a motion to accept Consent Agenda Items 7.1 through 7.11.
I'll make a motion to accept Consent Agenda Items 7.1 through 7.11.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any, excuse me, any... Thank you. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We have accepted the consent agenda. We don't have any items that have been removed from the consent agenda. And Mrs. Passeretti, thank you for helping me find that word. And I'm gonna pass this over to you for the correspondence.
Thank you, Dr. Roscoe. Every once in a while, I get lucky. We have two notes of thanks that I'd like to read. The first one says, "Dear Central Office Administrators, it is with appreciation that I write on behalf of the students and staff at Mary J. Fritz for the book donated in honor of Ray Ross." The name of the book is "Celebrate With Me: Recipes, Crafts, and Holiday Fun." "And holiday fun from around the world." "Book is already a big hit at our school. The students love learning about different cultures." "Thank you. Sincerely, Laura McCall, librarian." Thank you for that. Second piece of correspondence, another thank-you note. This may be my favorite thank-you note of all time and I didn't have any input in writing this. "Dear Ms. Belizzi and Central Office Team, thank you so much for your recent donation to the MYB, which is Moses Y. Beach Library, in honor of the Board Member Jen Passeretti." That is, that is aye. It gets better. "This joyful counting story is as engaging and delightful as Jen herself." Can I have a copy of this later? "And is sure to be enjoyed by many of our students and teachers for years to come. Your support of the library through this wonderful tradition is truly appreciated. Sincerely, Anne Poirier from Moses Y. Beach Library." Thank you, Anne. That's very kind words. I appreciate that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can see why it's your favorite. Moving on to the committee reports. We do not have an ACES report this evening, so I'm just going to move on to Systemwide PTAC. Mrs. Latour, if I could pass it to you.
Hi, so the meeting this month was a committee meeting. Our next full Systemwide PTAC meeting that involves everybody is May 21st at 6 o'clock via Google Meet.
Thank you. And Superintendent Belizzi, are you giving the Special Education PTAC update? Thank you.
Yes, I can. So Mrs. Turner apologizes that she's not here. On the 16th, we hosted the Annual Special Education Resource Fair. We received positive feedback from all of the vendors and the families. It was another great success, and I did have an opportunity to stop by. It was really lovely, everyone did a lovely job. So it was nice to see the parents coming through with their families and for all the vendors to be set up. The next PTAC meeting is scheduled for May 8th. The topic of the presentation is autism. It will be once again provided in a hybrid format, so we encourage all families to attend our last meeting of the year. And that's from Mrs. Turner.
Thank you. Mr. Bondi is not with us this evening, but there also was not a Food Service Committee meeting this past month, so nothing new to report there. And Dr. Thompson, do you have an update on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee?
Yes, I do, and thank you. I'm so proud to inform you that this past Saturday, April 20th, there was an amazing kickoff event for the First Wallingford Table, which the Racial Justice Team was a proud sponsor. The Wallingford Table is a town-wide group that has a goal to foster intentional dialogue among diverse communities of the town of Wallingford through culinary experiences. We believe that bringing people together to share a meal is fundamental to breaking down barriers, building new friendships, and celebrating the unique aspects of our many cultures. And the Wallingford Table is being featured during the Wallingford Public Library's Great Give fundraising event, which is May 1st and 2nd.
Thank you. And Mr. Deering, the report from CAPE, please.
CAPE recently held a webinar about upcoming legislation relating to education. There is also a recording of it available on the CAPE website. Certainly, if any of the board members are interested, I'd be happy to send you a link.
Thank you. I know there's also been a lot of talk through CAPE in terms of budgets, since we are really in the thick of budget season, so a lot of interesting conversation there from the other towns as well. We do not have any old business to discuss at this time. And so I'd like to move on to item number 12 of our agenda. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we are in executive session. And we are back from executive session. Thank you for coming back in. Moving right along in our agenda, item number 13. Mr. Vado, I'm going to pass this over to you for our Instructional Committee report.
Okay, we have 13.1 as the superintendent's non-renewal recommendation. And before I make the motion, I'll just have Superintendent Belizzi briefly explain what that's about.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. So this is something we do every year. This is for our non-tenured teachers. They get a letter from us, which starts this process, which is right now if they are non-tenured. It's according to one of our state statutes that we send out this letter letting them know that we're bringing their name here. They get a letter from us, they speak with their building administrator, and we let them know that the name is coming here because they're not tenured yet. Once the budget is then passed, we send out another letter to let them know that we're rescinding the non-renewal letters and that they then have a job. So it's kind of a formality, it meets the language of the statute that we do, that we provide it. Some districts choose to give the letters to everyone, some do not. It's been a past practice here for years that all of our non-tenured teachers receive this letter.
You want to begin then with that recommendation?
Okay. So in my capacity as Superintendent of Schools, I recommend that the Wallingford Board of Education non-renew the teaching contracts of the named individuals on the attached non-renewal list effective at the end of the 2023-2024 school year in accordance with the provisions of the Connecticut General Statute, the Connecticut General Statute, Section 10-151, and that the Board authorized me to furnish written notice of action. And then I provided you all with a list of names. You should know that the above, or the list of named teachers have been advised that I intend to make this recommendation. If the Board of Education takes action on my recommendation, the teachers have the right under Connecticut General Statutes, Section 10-151, to request the reasons for the Board of Education's action to non-renew their contract of employment. Further, I also recommend that I be authorized and instructed to communicate notice of this action by the Board to the affected teachers and to respond for the Board to any appropriate requests that may be forthcoming from the teachers or their representatives as provided in the teacher tenure law.
Okay. 13.2 is in response to that statement that the superintendent just made. So therefore, I make a motion that pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 10-151, the Wallingford Board of Education non-renew the teaching contracts of the named individuals on the non-renewal list at the end of the 2023-2024 school year as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. That list is at the end of this section. I further move that the Superintendent of Schools be directed to communicate this action of the Board in writing to the affected teachers and that the Superintendent be authorized to respond on behalf of the Board to any requests for a hearing, if required by law, or for other information which may be forthcoming from the teachers or pursuant to applicable provisions of the Connecticut General Statute, Section 10-151, and that the Superintendent be directed that any response for a hearing, if a hearing is required by law, indicate that such hearing is to be before the Board of Education. Teachers named on the list below, recommended by the Superintendent of Schools for non-renewal by the Wallingford Board of Education pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 10-151, effective at the end of the 2023-2024 school year. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. 13.3. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Judith DeRosa effective December 20th, 2024. Judith DeRosa has been a school nurse since November 14th, 2014, for a total of 10 years in the Wallingford Public Schools.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. 13.4. Approval of High School Graduation Date and the Last Day of School, Monday, June 17th, 2024.
Mr. Vado, I just want to have some discussion about this. I've been contacted by several parents that are asking, instead of having a half a day on Monday, can we do graduation on the Friday? I received several emails from people asking for that and wondering if there can be a discussion about that. I know Wallingford goes three extra days than is required. I know 180 is required, we go 183. Is there a way that we can do last day of school on the Friday?
I'm wondering if I should make the motion first and have a discussion on the motion. All right, let me do that first, and then you can repeat everything. Or just say, whatever. Okay. Therefore, I make a motion that the High School Graduation Date and the Last Day of School be Monday, June 17th, 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
I'd like to have a discussion on the motion.
You don't have to repeat everything.
Okay, great, super.
Give us the general gist of your...
Basically, we're asking if the last day of school can be on the Friday instead of the Monday.
So there's a couple of things, we'd have to go back to the Calendar Committee first to bring up that discussion to see if we could make that change. You are correct that we go to school additional days than what the state requires. I think based on that, we'd have to have discussion with all of our staff as well because it is taking away a day, not just from students, but we'd have to figure out what we're doing with staff and the impact for staff as well. The other piece of that is Project Graduation. It's my understanding that it is already set and scheduled for Monday evening. So just a piece to kind of consider and add to that as well is we'd have graduation then on Friday, and Project Graduation then would still have to be, it's my understanding, Monday night because of the way that is set up and I believe the location that they have it. So just some things to consider, but it's something that we'd have to go back and have discussion with the Calendar Committee, and then it'd have to come back here. We'd also have to have discussion with all of our staff as well, the different unions of our staff, to discuss the difference in the days. You'd have to look to see if you wanted to forgive the student day and make a motion to make that change. And if we wanted to maintain the 188 days that our staff goes and then change just the student day. So there's some things that have to be discussed at the Calendar Committee if that's something we wish to do.
Can we change this, forgive the student day and the teacher day? Because it was a half-day on Monday?
Did you repeat that question?
Can we forgive the student day and the teacher day?
So again, that's something we'd have to be negotiated and have discussion about because if you're forgiving that day, we pay them for 188 days. So we'd have to talk about that. That would have to be something we'd have to discuss in negotiation pieces. So is it that, I don't know, there's lots of scenarios. Would you look at it that if you made Fri... And I'm just thinking off the top of my head, if you made Friday the early release day, the last day of school for students, you make that Friday graduation, you'd have to consider then, are you having staff come back on Monday because you're paying them for the 188 days to meet their contractual requirements? Are you, how, in terms of forgiving that day, what does that mean exactly? And all the impact of the other staff that we have, both union and non-union. We'd have to look at each one of those contracts and have discussion for that. And then Project Graduation would be a different day. And so we just have to discuss that as well in terms of, you know, with the Project Graduation Committee.
Superintendent Belizzi, may I ask you a quick question? Just for clarification, would I be correct in saying that we would need to get endorsement from all of the unions collectively if you wanted to change any of the dates? Because it would affect pay in the end? Am I right that you would need all the unions to agree?
So you'd have to look at, so we have nine unions, so you'd have to look at the impacted unions. So like, I think, when I think about it, as I'm just doing it off the top of my head, if we have nine, you need to take a look at the contracts that it's going to impact that are based on the student day, which is going to be your teacher's contract, your nurses, your clerical, some of your clerical staff that are impacted, depending on how many days they work, food services. So again, it would just be going back and looking and having discussions with them as to how we would work that out. But it really has to go back to the Calendar Committee for that initial discussion.
Thank you.
Maybe I'm not on, oh, I wasn't on, thank you. I understand the convenience of wanting to graduate on a Friday, totally understand that. There's schedules, there's planning. But I do think that there's the impact logistically of what this does and how that gets done. And so while I sympathize with the parents, it's not as easy as it seems just to say, let's roll back graduation by a half-day because there are so many other things. I don't know that... Speaking from experience, I don't even know where mine son is graduating right now. I have a date, maybe it's going to graduate, isn't. And the upheaval that's causing just internally, like, oh my gosh. So I just, I would not support moving it back a half-day. And it's just because I think the logistics of trying to push it back are so much. It's just, it's a lot to do. If it was just as simple, but we do have nine unions, we have all sorts of things that are other things going on. So while I sympathize with those parents, I would not support moving it back by a half-day, by, before that Friday.
Would the situation be different, Mrs. Belizzi, if we just said graduation on Friday, but the last day of school still stays on Monday? Will you still have to go through all the things you just mentioned earlier?
So I think that the piece that's going to be challenging is the setup for graduation, the rehearsals, all of those pieces along. You know, it would still then be Friday be a full day, and then graduation starting, I think they usually start around 6 o'clock or something. So we'd have to take a look at those logistics as well.
I think the biggest problem is going to be Project Graduation because I think a lot of stuff has been planned and paid for for that Monday. And we ran into this before, and that was the problem.
And so, yes, and Project Graduation cannot be changed to that Friday. From what I've gathered, the information's been shared with me. And so that becomes a challenge as well. Then it's on, and the point of the Project Graduation, while we don't run it, the point of it is to be after the graduation. So then it's going to be, that won't be the case.
A little more controlled when it's right after school's over to go write Project Graduation.
Correct.
Now it's far.
I'm sorry.
It's in Ansonia now, right? Is it in Ansonia still?
Shelton?
Shelton. Shelton.
Just a question, I'm just wondering, is it possible to only have these dates that we're speaking of applicable to the seniors? So the seniors only finish the last Friday or Friday half-day, and the seniors are done on Friday, but everybody else comes in on Monday? Could you split it, or is that not a possible...
I just kind of asked that, I think.
I think it's something to think about. I think it's just logistically working all of that out. And again, we'd have to bring it back to the, we'd have to dig deeper and look through the Calendar Committee and work through the Calendar Committee to come up with a big piece of what that's going to look like.
Well, I'm sorry, just, my guess, I need clarification is that one class could be completely done, and you'd still need the staff in the building on Monday because you have other students. Yeah, so sorry if I, I didn't realize.
Basically, I said...
Yeah. But I do think that Project Graduation would suffer if you did graduation on Friday and have Project Graduation on Monday. Because then, when Project Graduation, they literally walk out the door of the auditorium, and they walk up to the table, they get signed out, and they get on a bus. And so they get, then, so there's no downtime, and they do that very purposely. And I do think that you will have tremendous drop-off to, and that's a free event to the students, if I'm not mistaken. Maybe it's not.
It used to be.
It used to be, it may have been. But at any rate, I would just be afraid that you would see a significant drop-off on your participation of Project Graduation. And we are trying to provide them with a safe and secure environment in which to celebrate their graduation. And I just would be fearful that that would be lost.
Any other conversation? Well... I guess we should take a vote then. Roll call vote, that's fine with me. Mrs. Lavelle, would you please take a roll call vote to approve High School Graduation Date and the Last Day of School on Monday, June 17th, 2024?
Mr. Doring?
Yes.
Mrs. Passeretti?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynis?
Yes.
Mrs. Regan?
Yes.
Mrs. Rosaci?
No.
Mr. Vado?
Yes.
Dr. Rosco?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you all. 13.5. Discussion and approval to apply for federal PEP grant for adult education.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Dr. Rosco and Board of Education members. My name is Anthony Mangiofico, the Director of Adult Education. I am here to seek your approval tonight to apply for a new federal program enhancement project, or PEP grants, for the fiscal year 2025. This will be the first year of a four-year cycle. Our current PEP grants end on June 30th of this year. We currently have PEP grants in the amount of $120,000. And with this new round, I'm applying for $185,000 in federal funding. applying for $185,000 in federal funding. There are five priority areas, I think I sent you a memo, so you had that in front of you, I'll briefly touch on all five. The first area is family literacy. This would allow us to continue to offer our family literacy program at the districts for pre-K to two schools. It's a wonderful opportunity for our adult students to become their child's teacher outside of school. The second priority area is instructional innovation. This is probably my favorite new proposed class, we're calling it Eat Around the World, because the students will come up with a recipe every week, the class will cook it together, so the students will be conversing with each other, also working on math skills, and then eventually developing monthly budgeting for groceries, as well as presenting some sort of digital presentation at the end of the semester. We're also going to have a Serve Safe class tied in with that, so they can become Serve Safe certified at the end of the semester. Number three is integrated English literacy and civics education. So with this class, in addition to practicing English, English skills, they're going to be learning how to become a good citizen, not just how to become a US citizen, but also how to become a good citizen in their communities. We're hoping to include field trips to the state capitol, as well as to the mayor's office. And with this being a presidential election year, there's going to be a lot of disinformation out there, so we need to teach our students how to become good, informed voting members of the community. Number four is technology integration and expansion of services. So with this, we're going to continue to offer our national extradiploma program, which is a high school completion option in Connecticut. We're going to offer our new morning class, it is going to focus heavily on digital literacy skills, because right now, over 80% of all the jobs that are out there require some sort of digital literacy, and we're going to make sure our students are fully prepared for the workforce when they, and when they finish that class. The fifth one, and final one, is called Transition Career Navigation and Support. This class will navigate college, workforce readiness, and job training. The American Job Center will work closely with these students to help them find good paying in-demand jobs and how to apply for those jobs. Part of the class will take place at Platt High School, which has a branch at the Connecticut Community College system, and then all students will leave with a career education plan so that they know exactly what they're going to do in their lives after they're done with our program. This grant is due on May 3rd, so I am seeking your approval to move forward with this grant, and if you do approve, I will submit tonight's minutes as proof of your support. Thank you.
Before I ask for a vote, do they have grants to build new adult education buildings? No?
Not that I'm aware of.
Please try to look for us.
All right.
Well, before, is there any chance if you need anyone to help taste in the priority area number two, just keep in mind that we can make ourselves available?
I will keep that in mind, thank you.
Okay, questions?
You mentioned something about students through the Eat Around the World program, they'll get some sort of certification, can you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure, it's, it's called Serve Safe, it's from the Connecticut Restaurant Association. So once they take that assessment, or take the class, then the assessment they pass, they can go work at a restaurant or cafeteria and have that credential to build on.
And I, I seem to recall my daughter had to do that on, like, company time, like, the company sent them away to, to do this sort of training. So for an individual to walk into a, a job interview already with that training, that's, that's huge, that's huge, that makes them so much more marketable, so thank you for doing that.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's take a vote then. I make a motion to approve to apply for the federal PEP grant for adult education.
I second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you, sir, for your hard work.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vado, and thank you for the assist, Mrs. Passeretti. Mrs. Regan, I am passing it over to you, and also Mrs. Reynis for the Operations Committee report.
Thank you, so the Operations Committee met in March, we went through the financials, Mr. Barone walked us through the financials, we continue to have, while we've stayed, I would say not flat, but our, our surplus did go down a little bit from the previous month, but we do still have issues with the deficit because of the outplacement, which is, that's because the excess cost grant reduction, so that continues to be an issue for us. We did have some, a deficit in the salaries as well, and then that is offset by the very warm weather, which we're very thankful for, because that did offset the utilities, but in the end, we do still have a projected surplus right now, but it's, it's tight, I know, it's going to be tight, and I can only imagine that we're going to continue to see some of those deficits, especially in the tuition placements. So, moving on to the cafeteria financial reports, we continue to, Mr. Bondi walked us through that, we have a, a surplus of 166,000 there, so we are getting our state reimbursements, so that continues, so they continue to be self-funded, which is good. And then Mr. Deptula walked us through a couple of the biggest projects that we were worked, that he's been working on, mainly the Rock Hill water issue, which has been fixed and taken care of, thank you, there is no more standing water there, and we appreciate the resources that took to get that problem solved, so we do appreciate that. I know that you did talk a little bit, you gave us a short update on the field, but we will go through that in the next item, so that's the end of that report. Moving on to the next report, Mr. Deptula, would you like to give us an update on the sea and track and field, please?
Absolutely, good evening. Last week, we, we got some good news, the principal architect came out, inspected the field, and came to the conclusion that it was overfilled with rubber. The, an executive from Sprint Turf also joined us, he came to the same conclusion. They then brought in a, a factory team that does work for Sprint Turf, and they came to the same conclusion that the field was overfilled. When they fill these fields, they're, they're installing an entire bag of this rubber, it's probably, I'm guessing a yard and a half of rubber in three minutes. So the, it's prevailing wage work, they're in a big hurry to get it done, and they did put too much rubber in the field. We don't have a firm date of when that's going to be resolved, but Sprint Turf is taking full responsibility for it, and they're going to bring out a rotary machine that will remove a small amount of rubber from the field. Some of it may be redistributed, and some of it we may save, because by this time next year, we'll be putting rubber infill back into the field. So that's, that's about it, but we expect this to be taken care of within the next two weeks.
And so they're going to come in, they're going to take care of it. I, I know we're coming into the summer, so the fields aren't going to be used as often, but I assume that we're going to continue to monitor the situation so that we can, like, I just want to make sure that we're keeping close tabs on this, especially since this has, this appears to be an issue from the turf company. I just want to make sure that we're staying in close contact with them, that we're keeping an eye on the field. I don't want this to be any less than perfect, we paid a lot of money for this field, and I think our expectations should be very, very high, that they will come and do whatever it needs to make sure that that field is maintained and is at its optimal, you know, condition.
Yeah, that's, that's not only in our best interest, it's in their best interest also. When they heard about this, they responded almost immediately.
Sure.
Hi, Mr. Deptula, thank you so much for your update. Some of the sentiments that we've heard are about how slippery the turf is. Excuse my ignorance, as much as you do provide me with turf 101, I'm not fully educated, I'm ready to move to the next topic of education, but do you think that this will reduce how slippery we're hearing that the turf is? Or I guess my question is, is it so slippery because of this excess fill?
That's exactly what it is, the excess fill coming to the surf, surface makes it slippery. It's by no means the, the slickest surface in the business, because there's other types of fill that are much slicker than what we have, but when it comes to the surface, it's, it's going to cause a slip issue, there's no doubt about it. And, you know, I went out there, I've been out there pre-dawn hours on several occasions, because I tend to go there right after the worst downpours, and, you know, the, the rubber's not coming to the surface because of, over, you know, water or anything, it's coming because people are playing on it, and that means it's too high.
Thank you.
That was the conclusion that our head groundskeeper came to, and that was the conclusion I came to also, so all parties are in agreement.
And we heard Mr. Rosaci mention a squish, a squish, is, is that because there's just too much there as well?
I, I think when it comes to the surface, that's probably causing that. I, I've walked the field many, many times, I'm really not seeing that a bad thing, but once all this work is completed, we'll do an impact test to verify that it's correct.
Thank you so much.
Softer is generally better than firmer, you know?
I can understand that.
We'll, we'll have it G-force tested again.
Thank you, and I appreciate your willingness to be so kind in my probably very ignorant questions, but just wanting to make sure that, I'm sure if I have them, others might have them, and by no means do I claim to be a turf expert, so I appreciate the way in which you do not make me feel silly for asking them, thank you.
No silly questions.
Mr. Vado?
Mark, how, how is this done? Is it raked off, is it like vacuumed up?
It's a rotary, it's like a rotary groomer. They, they ran the rotary groomer there when we had everyone out to the field, and that's when their crew confirmed what we were all seeing. And they, they didn't have time to do the whole field, they did, I think mostly the out of, out of play areas.
I, I have walked the field before, one of the games I was at, not the whole field, I mean, I even got on my hands and knees and I rubbed, and it was dry, it didn't seem slippery, but where I was, there wasn't as much of that rubber above the ground, it was more down toward the wetlands area.
We, we do, we do own a machine that can do the same process, but it's not, it's a, it's a much slower machine. Their, their machine you can drive quicker, and it's their responsibility, because we're not the ones that overfilled the field.
Thank you.
Mrs. Passeretti?
Hi, thank, no, that's okay. Thank you, Mr. Deptula, for, one of the things that I appreciate is every time we come to you with a concern that you really are taking care of things and responding very quickly, so I, I appreciate you doing that. So I, I have a question and maybe just a comment, so my question is, did the company explain why there was the overfill, filling in the first place? And then my, my follow-up comment is, you know, when I've had work done on my house and I've found a couple things that went wrong with, because of something the contractor did, or just it wasn't fine tuned, I, I would start to feel concerned that I might see other things wrong down the line. Do you have any concerns that we should, where we should be keeping an eye on this, this track, just to make sure there's nothing else that goes wrong with this?
No.
Okay.
You know, as far as the workmanship and the design, that all, everything seems reasonably solid. You know, like I say, these bags were going down one every three minutes, so this was basically a mistake of a three-minute time period in history. But that one bag is what overfilled the field. As far as seams and, you know, the limited amount of work that was done below the field, you know, I saw every bit of it, and I don't really have any worry. They did a great job with the new curb that goes between the track and field. Field has a nice, a better crown than it ever had, and the track has a little bit more of a tilt towards the infield, and the infield is basically the drain for the track. So I saw that as a positive thing. You know, when we started this job, we had an athletic director, Chris Daley, was working on it with my architect at the time, who has, both of them have since moved on, and, you know, we don't have them to assist anymore, but this is a relatively simple job.
And I, I do appreciate that they have been very responsive, and they're making things right, so I, I do appreciate that their, their, their willingness to work with us on this.
Yeah, I appreciate that too, because anytime I've brought anything to their attention, I really haven't gotten any pushback, which is refreshing.
Are there any other comments on this?
I just have one. How, how long is the warranty on the turf and the track for us to bring up any issues?
I'd have to get back to you on that, because I, I don't recall.
I'm just wondering if once this is raked and that comes up, if it doesn't correct the issue, if there's still the sponginess. I know you received a video of one of the coaches walking down the field, where you can actually hear like the squishing in the, in the turf, so.
By the test that's going to be done following this work.
Okay, so we'll, we'll know quickly, and we'll know if something else needs to be addressed?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And it's been noted, so it's not, you know, they're, they're liable for these, whatever we call it, repairs or, you know, removal of the rubber.
Okay, great, and I know there was one spot in the track that the coach was worried about that potentially was cracked, did, were we able to take a look at that?
Yeah, it was not cracked, but there is a visual defect in it, it's, that's all it is, is visual, and it's faded quite a bit since the day the track was put in. There's really nothing that can be done from that. In five years, we'll be recoding that track, and that will probably disappear. But I had, I did notice when I was there last week that that line has faded quite a bit.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the board? There are none, then do you want to go into, are there any public, you want to move on to the next one? So we will open this up for public comment regarding the field, for anyone who would wish to make a comment.
And just for clarification, the same, the same rules apply to the second public comment as to the first ones, I don't think I need to read the statement again, but.
Just state your name and your address, please.
Gina Tefilio, 7 Platt Drive. What is being done about the flooding at the, at the turf? Because it's still flooding, the last time it rained, I think it took, what, 12 hours to, to resolve?
Mr. Deptula, can you move closer to your mic?
So all the previous times it flooded, we shouldn't expect that again? Because I'm just concerned about the warranty, because usually.
It doesn't affect the warranty at all.
So if we get more flooding, like we had four or five flooding incidences this year, do we expect that to continue?
We fixed, we fixed the drainage issue. That was a outflow on the north east corner that was 100% blocked with roots.
Okay.
So we removed all those roots, and that, that, that was 50% of the field drainage and 100% of the site drainage. When you see catch basins, they all go to that outflow.
Yep.
Both outflows have flow restrictors in them, and we really can't discharge any quicker to the wetlands. That is the threshold, those flow control structures will only allow us, I think one is a six-inch pipe, and the other one may be a 10-inch pipe, that's the maximum discharge that we're allowed to send into the wetlands. We, we may have an opportunity to adjust that a little bit, but that's the fixed point. The field itself will take well over 100 inches of rain per hour, so we know it's, you know, we know the field material, the underlayment, the stone underneath, that's all good for well over 100 inches of hour, so that's never really been the issue.
And also, we, I, I've seen, I think you've seen the pictures where all the black pebbles are usually on the outs, like, on the outer parts of the turf? You saw a picture, it's, like, if you look at the lacrosse nets, they encompass all around there, not really the middle so much, but there's massive black amounts of pebbles around that area. So I don't, I don't know if that's a, what, what the.
That's what, that's what Sprint Turf is going to resolve.
That's the rubber that's come up.
Right, right, I know, it's the rubber, I know. Like, like Steve, I've been to a million, million turfs around the state, I've never seen anything like this, so I, the town did spend a lot of money, so I just want to make sure that they, the contractor is held responsible for it. Do, do we close out the project, is there any retainage left on it?
We did close it out, there is some kind of retainage left on it, but.
I, yeah, I mean.
They're, 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 they're a reputable company, and so is the designer, so that really isn't an issue.
Okay, but there's still retainage that we're holding out on?
The town retained something, because it was a bond of a project.
Right.
I've signed off on it, because they completed their work, and I had to sign off, or else we'd be in court.
Okay, thank you.
And there was really, there was really no reason to sign off, because they did what they were supposed to do, as, as the field was designed.
Do we have any other public comment? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Regan. Now moving on to the administrative report. Superintendent Belizzi?
Thank you. Couple things before I get into the admin report. Excuse me, I just wanted to share that we have two other donations that I just wanted to mention that are under the $500 limit. So the first one was submitted by Lisa Baker in our Special Education Department. From, this was the catering that was done for the Special Education Resource Fair. Chick-fil-A donated all of the food for the resource fair, so that is a value of $294.50. So we appreciate Todd Langston donating all of that food for all of the vendors and the staff that participated in that event. The second item that we have here is an in-kind donation from Specialty Transportation for a shuttle bus for the Wallingford Public Schools and SCOW, eighth annual international celebration event that is going to be held on May 8th. It's for the overflow parking at PNA Park in the parking lot at Hall Avenue and South Cherry Street. So they are going to run shuttles for us, and the value for that is $227.50. So we appreciate both of them providing us with those donations. The next piece I just wanted to go over briefly in the admin report. We are working very diligently about budget. And so as you all are aware, we have a meeting tomorrow evening with the Town Council to review the budget requests that you have all approved. As you are aware, the mayor has made his recommendation to us, but we are still short the $3.9 million for our budget. And so tomorrow evening, I will be answering questions from the Town Council and addressing the impact that it will have here in very broad terms because we have not had any of our budget workshops yet. We typically have our budget workshops once the number is finalized from Town Council. But I have been in communication with a lot of our staff and with our administrators, and I will continue tomorrow as well, just reviewing and addressing with them that this is a very large impact to our budget. It will definitely for sure impact the programming and the staffing that we have in this district. And so we are hoping for good questions tomorrow night and providing them with a lot of information that we have thus far. The second piece, as you all have decided now on the graduation date, I will work with the administrators to make sure that before graduation happens, we give the opportunity to our seniors to go back and to walk through their elementary schools. I know they have always enjoyed doing that, and it's been a big success on both sides of town. So we'll make sure that we coordinate that. Now that the date has been solidified, we'll continue to look at making sure we have all the resources we have for graduation, for high school, and for our students to be able to walk through the buildings and the schools. And the other thing I just wanted to address with the Town Council meeting tomorrow evening, tomorrow is an opportunity for them to ask me questions. There also is a public hearing that will be held here in the Town Council Chambers Monday, April 29th, which is an opportunity for the public to also come again and share public comments and ask further questions of our budget along with other town budgets. So just wanted to make sure we're hitting home those two dates that are available for everyone to pay attention budget-wise.
Thank you very much.
I think Mrs. Latour has just a few quick things to mention as well.
I do, just very, very quickly. Hello, everyone. And for our members of the public, kindergarten registration is still going on. We are still open for business and enrollment. Everything that a parent may need to find regarding registration is on our district website. Students need to be five in or before September 1st. For students who turn five after September 1st but before January 1st, there's still the opportunity to be screened for early admittance. Since our big screening back in January, we have run two separate days. We kind of wait for a little list to be created before we do that. So I just wanted to kind of put the plug out there one more time because our buildings are starting to schedule kindergarten orientation for our families in June. And then they'll have another one, of course, in the summer for anyone who registers. But just to put the message out there one more time. And then I just wanted to mention two other things. The State of Connecticut Summit assessment window is closing shortly, within the next few weeks. We're wrapping up Smarter Balance assessments. We're wrapping up the NGSS, as you heard earlier this evening, and the Connecticut Alternative Assessment. These have been successful in terms of minimal disruptions, sort of, to the schedule during the week. And I have to say that the building principals, our students and our staff have been doing an amazing job getting through the quantity of testing that they have to get through for the State of Connecticut. And then finally, this is for the board. Just a heads up, May and June are, the Instructional Committee are heavy curriculum approval months. So get your reading glasses out. I will make sure that your curriculum arrives in enough time based on the quantity of, you know, the number of inches of the size of the papers that you'll be getting so that you have time to review them. We've broken it up by department over May and June, but I did want to just kind of give you a heads up in that respect. Thanks. I know it was subtle, wasn't it?
Thank you so much. We, before I move on, we do have one thank you that was lost in the shuffle, so I just want to make sure that we acknowledge this. Very big thank you to Country Flower Farms, Paul and Cheryl Schatzman, for the donation of the seed packets in honor of Earth Day. This came in through Superintendent Belizzi's office, and it was for pre-K through 5. I'm sure the students really loved working with this and learning all about growth of seeds on Earth Day. And this donation was in the amount of $3,355. So thank you so much for that support to our district. There are a couple of announcements. On Monday, May 6th, we have our Instructional Committee meeting. That will be at 6:00 PM via Google Meet. And on Monday, May 13th, the Operations Committee, again via Google Meet at 6:00 PM. And the date of our next meeting here in the Town Council Chambers is Thursday, May 30th. And that time is at 6:30 PM. And I, no other work to come before this board. I would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Can I have a second, please? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Anyone opposed? There we have it. Thank you so much.